Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 28, 2025 Board, Select Board Meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to rise. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'm going to ask for roll call.
Frank West here.
Jacob Gior here.
Kevin Kyra here.
And Garrett DePalmer, I'm here. At this time also, I want to congratulate Mr. Kyra for being re-elected to the board and also our new member, Jacob Greenlaw.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to have Treasury warrants.
Let's skip that second one.
Got this one here?
Yep. Yeah, that one we don't do. We do that separately.
Okay, yeah.
The bottom one, yeah.
Yeah. Treasury warrants will be 2542, 2542W, 2542T, 2543, 2543W, 2543S. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Approved. And we have one more.
One separate one?
One separate one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to recognize an abstention on the vote?
On the next one, this next one.
On the next one.
Okay, okay.
This is on the...
He abstained from this one.
Yes, I was abstaining as I wasn't involved.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Right.
And then we have Treasury warrant 2543T. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And Mr. West is going to abstain.
And Jake.
Now, we have approval of minutes for April 14, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor? And again, Jake's will abstain from this. Okay. Now, our first appointment of the evening is with Cold One BBQ. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I like your T-shirts.
Thank you.
And this evening you're here for... Entertainment license.
First, entertainment license.
Yep. An entertainment license? Can you tell us a little about it?
Well, first, I want to apologize for us missing the meeting at the last board meeting. We were on the agenda and we were just so crazy, we lost track of day and time, so we weren't able to be here. So we apologize for wasting anybody's time. So we'd like to have the entertainment license because we'd like to do some live music in the restaurant. We have a pretty good-sized space and it draws in a lot of customers and it's more of an acoustic sound, so it's not like, you know, huge rock bands or anything like that.
What time would you be looking at having your entertainment? Is it an all-day event or...?
Not typically. We may have an all-day event at some point, like maybe once a year, but most of the time it's going to be like a Friday, Saturday night, maybe a Thursday, and it would be 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Yeah, reasonable hours. We close at 9:00.
I see we have a report from Joseph Desmond, the police chief, and John T. Alspalding, the building inspector.
Yes, both the police chief and the building inspector have recommended approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
It'll be Jake's first.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, just like to make a comment. I want to, I guess in one respect, I kind of want to apologize that I'm the one that actually caught the fact that it says that, you know, somebody must be present for the hearing, so I apologize that, you know, they were getting ready to vote and I'm the one that caught that little oversight, so...
Okay.
But I fully support the license and I just wish you well. I know I liked your old business and will be at your new business.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Best of luck at the new location.
Appreciate it.
It's been pretty busy.
That's great.
We could use some staff. We could use some help.
You're all hired. Too near the barbecue.
I know.
We were waiting for some aroma to be coming into the room.
Give it five minutes.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a first and second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? So moved, 5-0.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Enjoy it. Now, next on the agenda is Eagle Scout candidate. Good evening.
Good evening.
And who do we have with us today?
My name is Nathan Carrier.
And I'm Anthony Carrier.
That's easy. Could you tell us a little about your project?
So I am proposing to install a bike rack at the middle school so the people on the Beltwell side of the school can have like easy storage of their bikes and so they won't get risk of like stolen, so...
Nathan, I like that idea.
Thank you.
Great idea.
So the importance of the bike rack on that side of the school is so that people who are riding their bikes from that side of town don't have to go through the people who are waiting that got, that get dropped off from the buses. They don't have to like go through all of those people so they're not injuring anyone in risk of getting injured themselves, so...
Question I have is where did you come up with the idea? It's a terrific idea, but I'm just surprised someone would be thinking about something like that.
So I used to ride my bike to the middle school when I was there and I used to put my bike against that fence there and I noticed a lot of people doing that, so I just came up with the idea of installing a bike rack there.
Awesome. Anyone?
Thank you. Nathan, this is a great idea. I saw the picture of the fence you were talking about, so I agree. I mean, it's not ideal and you can't really probably lock them up well and it's on wood, right? If someone really wanted to take it, they could just bust the wood, right? Not that I think that happens much in this town, but still, you know, it's the point. You never know. This is a terrific idea and it seems like you put a lot of thought into it with putting it in the area that is safe for the bike riders and for other pedestrians and cars. So I think this is a wonderful project and it's going to benefit the kids at the middle school for years to come.
Okay.
Yeah, so great work.
Yeah, so I see that you're, I support this, but I see your fundraising. So a couple of questions. One, how much are you looking to fundraise and how are you planning to fundraise and is there a way people can start contributing now?
So I'm going to set up a GoFundMe and we were thinking about selling magnets too of the...
256 logo with bikes on it?
The 256 logo with the bikes on it.
Oh, nice.
So, and then how much money I'm probably going to be raising will probably be around $2,000 maybe.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other? Frank?
First of all, I'd like to commend you. I think it's a great idea. As you know, I've been involved with Scouts since 2002 and I was actually a Cub Scout back in 1970, even though I'm only 28 years old, so... But I think that's an awesome idea. I look forward to seeing it. So it looks like you're going to have it done in mid-June?
Yep.
Nice. So you're going to have a dedication ceremony or anything like that or...?
Uh, probably.
Nice, well, if you happen to invite the board to, the select board, maybe a member two or a five will show up, so... But I wish you a lot of luck with it. I totally support it. I think it's a great idea, something that I'm kind of surprised that where the school's been there for 25 years or whatever, that, you know, that there hasn't been an Eagle Scout candidate 20 years ago sitting here. So great ingenuity on that and...
Thank you.
Is there anything special that you'd like to say about this project as far as, you know, who you've talked to or anything like that? The town boards or town members or...
So... So I would like to thank Mr. McGoldy, the director of the DPW, for answering all my emails with helpful tips and helping me guide through the process of the project. And also I would like to thank Mr. Slagle too for helping me with getting this appointment with the select board and also the principals too of the middle school, Mr. Kyra and Mr. Faircloth, with helping me with getting like the information needed for this project.
I think the thing is, is that what you find out when you do these projects is that you find out it's not, hey, I want to put a bike rack and let's just do it. There's a lot involved, so I appreciate the fact that you've gone through all the people and I wish you a lot of luck and success. Congratulations and I look forward to seeing that eagle in your uniform.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, congratulations, very proud of you. I know your parents have been very involved and I know the work that goes into it, so kudos to you. It's an outstanding achievement that I think you know is going to stick with you for life, so it's wonderful, so congratulations.
Well, and I have sons that are Eagle Scout, so we kind of know what it's like to be in your end, in your end, sir.
Well, Mr. Carrier had my son, so he knows him well.
No, I did not.
Well, you were in the troop, your son was there, so you still influenced him, so you were a part of it.
Great, great job.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Nathan, congratulations.
Thank you.
As I said, it's a wonderful project and we're looking forward to seeing it. And are you going to have a bunch of the troop help and your parents' help and everybody's going to be digging and putting the cement in and everything else that needs to be done?
Yep.
Yeah, right, right. Looking forward to it. Nice, nice idea.
Thank you.
Good addition to the school.
So I just want to say I was really impressed with Nathan when he came in. He made a presentation to me. Principal Kyra from the middle school came to that meeting as well. He had already thought out the reasoning why this was a great idea and I want to give him credit because I kind of put him in touch with Jamie, but I didn't go to the meeting or set it up. He got in touch with Jamie McGoldy himself and made sure he worked through the location so the DPW was okay with it, so I want to give all the credit to Nathan for carrying the water for this. He did a really great job, so it's very impressive.
Thank you.
Like I said at the beginning, when I first saw this, I was really surprised because everyone tries to do different things that are more noticeable and as I was reading along with what you're proposing, I'm saying, kids still use bikes. And, you know, they chain them up to what? Fences.
Yeah.
Now at least we have a location for, you know, some and I just commend you 100% for thinking of it and going forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? 5-0.
Congratulations.
You're on your way.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Take care.
Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Now, we're going to go into 7:30, we're a little early, but which is discussion and assignment of motions for the annual town meeting.
So folks should have the pink memo. Apologize for the bouncing around. Mine was attached to the back of something else, so I thought I'd lost it. Obviously, when we had this memo prepared, Jake was not a member with us yet. Do you have it? Did that pink memo make it? I have it in here, but I did look at it before coming in, but I'm okay with it. Because, you know, unlike kind of in a normal situation, we might have a chair moving into a town meeting, this year we don't, so it's just designed alphabetically. Obviously, if somebody has an issue or concern about one of the motions that they're assigned and they want to, certainly can bring it up to me and I can, you know, we can work to get that reassigned to someone else. So we'll have the consent agenda will be handled by Jake with respect to the authorizing the treasurer and anything else where it says, "New member," that'll be yours. Any questions, concerns?
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
You know, just like in the, you all know this, other than Jake, better than I do, you'll have, you'll have to sign off on your motions so that we have official forms on Saturday morning. And if there's any other, like I said, questions or concerns, please reach out.
Please.
Nope.
Now, we're moving on to communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Slagle.
The first communication we have is from Ronald M. DiGiorgio and Associates, a letter requesting to be reappointed as constable. And I believe the constable appointments are later on in the packet, so that was the first communication. No, I think we just take it as, take it as they come. It won't be very long, I think it'll be... The second one is a request from Mr. Jeff Cohen. As a matter of fact, the next two are for Mr. Jeff Cohen, who's the chair of the Republican Town Committee regarding two separate appointments to the Board of Registars. So those two separate, sorry, two separate letters regarding appointment to the Board of Registars. So, and again, those appointments to the board are later on in the agenda.
And now we're on to Board to Consider.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board to Consider number six. Board to Consider requests from, and I apologize, you know, in advance, Soterios Penzepulis to use Rotary Park for a birthday party on Saturday, May 17, 2025, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
I'll approve with discussion. Are we in approvals?
Why don't I make the, I can make a motion?
Make a motion, yeah, okay.
Just if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second for discussion. Just want to be sure that they're aware that it's...
Public space, everyone can be there.
Yeah, it's first come, first served. I mean, everybody can be there and it won't be, okay, that was my only...
Won't be exclusive.
Yeah, it won't be exclusive, it won't be cordoned off or anything like that.
They were informed of that.
Okay.
No conflicts, right? We don't have anything else other than scheduled that at that time.
Great, okay, no issues.
Okay. We'll take a vote for, there is a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor? And it's approved.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next Board to Consider is Board to Consider number seven. Board to Consider Appointments and Reappointments to Animal Control Officer, the Board of Appeals, the Board of Registars, Defense Viewer, Town Council, and Constables. So this would be, as the memo states, to a one-year term for Christopher H. Sullivan to be the Animal Control Officer, a five-year term to Ray Lepore on the Board of Appeals, a three-year term for Kelly S. Richards for the Board of Registars, a one-year term for John T. Alspalding and Paul Looney to be Defense Viewers, and a one-year term for KP Law to be Town Council. And then a list of folks to be constables on one-year terms, that would be Barbara J. Calla, Jason F. Costa, Brian R. Randell, Eric R. Randell, and then for, with a restriction to not solicit clients, but only to serve civil process, Paul D. Bruce Jr., Ronald M. DiGiorgio, Dennis C. Otis, and William F. A. Pepacelli. And then Christopher H. Sullivan, only in conjunction with his duty as the Animal Control Board.
Did we get clearance from the Chief of Police on these people? Have they been...
When they appointed, they get clearance?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
You have a second? All those in favor? So moved.
Mr. Chair, the next item is Board to Consider number eight. This is Board to Consider Ratification of the Town Manager's Appointments and Reappointments to the Commission on Disabilities, Economic Development Committee, Historical Commission, and Permanent Building Committee. So this would be three-year terms on the Commission of Disabilities for Carol Hilbinger and Robert N. Oliveri, a definite term for the economic development. We don't have anybody for that slot, is that correct? So this would be the Historical Commission, three-year terms for Bonnie A. Smith and Joseph A. Jackson, and the Permanent Building Committee, a three-year term for Dennis P. Kelly. Just as a kind of a point of note, the Economic Development Committee is going to be losing a member. Frank, I believe that was your appointment, so that means you have another person to appoint to the Economic Development Subcommittee and then I will, since we don't have a person, my appointment will have to come up for ratification when we have a person for the manager slot.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is Town Manager Announcing the Appointments to Various Boards, Committees, and Commissions. So this is the Town Manager's Appointments for 2025. Animal Inspector for one year, Board of Assessors, Matthew Bilet, for a indefinite term. Building Inspector, John T. Spalding with Michael P. Desmond as an alternate inspector for one year. Carter Lecture Fund Committee for an unexpired term to expire in 2027 is Megan Jones. The Carter Lecture Fund Committee, a three-year term to expire 2028, Teresa McDermott. The Cemetery Commission, a three-year term to expire 2028, Cynthia A. McHugh. The Conservation Commission, a three-year term to expire 2028, Kelly R. Ashton, Theron R. Bradley, and Donald J. Pearson. The Elderly Services Commission, a three-year term to expire 2028, Nancy A. Audovic, Gil A. Portopapas, and Mark K. Ryan. The Electrical Inspector, a one-year term to expire 2026, Frederick Sutter. Arthur T. Kelly is an alternate, James F. Largentton Jr. as an alternate. The Gas Inspector, a one-year term to expire 2026, John M. Cacciatore with John J. Maitick Jr. as an alternate. Board of Health, a three-year term to expire 2028, Daniel J. King. Library Trustees for three-year terms to expire 2028, Jeffrey H. Nussbaum and Donald J. Pearson. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2026, John M. Cacciatore and John J. Maitick Jr. as alternate. Public Weir was vacant. Recreation Commission, we have a three-year term to expire 2028, Ronald B. Bento and Karen Martin. And the Seal of Ways and Measures for a one-year term to expire 2026, Richard E. Schultz. Veterans Agent on a one-year term to expire 2026, Michael Fratton. Veterans Grave Officer on a one-year term to expire 2026, Michael Fratton. Water and Sewer Commission on a three-year term to expire 2028, Michael A. Camosio. Wiring Inspector on a one-year term to expire 2026, Frederick Sutter with Arthur T. Kelly and James F. Largentton Jr. as alternates. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a motion?
This is not our motion.
Sorry. Public comments.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of documents. Primarily, they're courteous to the incumbents, but with the community members, congratulations. There is a copy thing.
Thank you.
Paul Shalafour, 48 Hopkins Street. I come before you tonight to express my concern regarding an inquiry that I made of the town manager regarding an earth removal situation to which I am in a butter. On April 14 through April 16, there was an earth removal operation going across, going on across the street from my house. On the 17th of April, I made an email inquiry of the town manager asking if it was a permissible operation and if it was compliant with the bylaw. I did not receive an answer from him and through the passage of that following week, I made another inquiry about the earth removal, again, reiterating my first inquiry about its permissibility and bylaw compliance. I did not receive an answer from that one either. At that point, not having any information as to the permissibility of the earth removal, I made a complaint to the Chief of Police. The Chief of Police informed me that he was directed by the town manager not to have any further enforcement activities with the project that was going on, specifically the earth removal. I give you that contract right there, the town manager's contract, because of the highlighted clauses there about the town charter. Now, the town charter states what the town manager's duties and responsibilities are and one of them is to administer either directly or through his appointees the bylaws of the town of Wilmington. And I can't help but not understand why that is not taking place, why the exact opposite is actually taking place. Now, over the previous year, there have been three entities that have come before the board to, in application of earth removal contracts, earth removal permits. One taking place just last week while the, this earth removal that I speak of was going on on April 14. There was a earth removal permit before the board for 226 Lowell Street. Now, aside from it being discourteous and disrespectful and unprofessional, not getting an answer from the very person that is charged by law through the town's charter to administer the bylaws is the absolute antithesis of government transparency. It was a simple question, is it permissible? Is it bylaw compliant? There should be no other answer coming except yes, it is because of these reasons or no, it is not because of these reasons. The ghosting that took place is far, far, far from any manner of professionalism on the part of the town manager. It was not a nasty letter. It was not a nasty letter. It was... it would be greatly appreciated if you could get back to me. I would greatly appreciate it if you could let me know the permissibility of this particular earth-moving operation. As far as I can tell, through my own research, through my own public records requests, through my own research of what has come before the Board over the last year, that there is no permit there and that there is no exemption to the earth removal project. And if there was, I would imagine that it would have been told to me when I initially asked it and that I would not have to ask it a second time. But I put before the Board right now, the town manager is charged in his contract, as you can read right there on the very first page that I've highlighted, to follow the town charter. And the town charter states, "The town manager shall," not at his discretion, not if he feels like it, not if he thinks I'm being too annoying with interrogatories or inquiries, but that he shall administer directly or through his appointees the town bylaws. And I don't know why that isn't happening. And I'm not asking for an answer tonight. I am putting this on the Board for them to have knowledge of it. It should not have happened. I ask a question. I should not be ghosted by the person that's bound by law to be administering the town's bylaws. It's right there in the town charter, and I don't know why this happened. I am putting it on the Board right now. Within the town's bylaw regarding earth removal, there is a clause that states that the Board may take action should they become aware of a violation of the bylaw. Anybody on the Board needs further act... needs further information, you know how to contact me, you all have my email, and the incumbents that do have my email, feel free to share it, Mr. Gior. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Rob Fisulolo, I'll make this quick. I know everybody wants to get out. 28 Magery Road. As you know, Saturday, we have a pretty big decision to make as a town. We've heard... I stood up here, I don't know, two or three meetings ago regarding the exemption for 3A, and the townspeople were told that we're keeping all the options open. And I stressed, if this gets to the vote and it passes, there is no exemption. I want to highlight that today. So are we really keeping our options open as I was told four or five times that one night? We have heard nothing from the Board as far as has the town filed an exemption? Where has that discussion been? Townspeople are now going to be asked to vote on this, and we don't know anything. The transparency here seems to go... be going in the wrong direction. This is a huge vote, so I'm going to end my comments there. I will be working my tail off to make sure that we get no votes there. And as I said before, I don't want my taxes going to feasibility studies. I would much rather my taxes be spent on fighting the state on this intrusion. They're trying to blow up home rule, and it's not right. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Announcements? Is no other comments being?
Well, if I may, just on the MBTA, this is through to the town manager. Is there anything that we can bring the public up to speed with? I know we've been in executive session in discussion on exemptions, so I know we can't, you know, detail that, but, you know, we've actually discussed this in executive session about what we want and can and, you know, can say to the public. So I've just... I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there some... something we can say, you know, to Mr. Fisulolo's point to just ahead of it? And again, if it's nothing, it's nothing. I just want to put it out there to ask you.
Yeah, I mean, it's because it is an executive session issue and litigation that has yet to be filed, it's a little bit... a little bit tricky that the town is working with Town Council to put our best foot forward with respect to MBTA zoning and... that in all likelihood will happen as, you know, as the Board has discussed post-town meeting.
Thank you.
Announcements?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. West?
Just wanted to... On announcements, I just wanted to say that, you know, we do have a public wayer, one-year term vacant, so I don't know how they apply, but we'd like to get that position filled. Certainly, if anybody's interested in Economic Development Committee, give me a call, talk to the... talk to the town, let's get that position filled. So... And if there's any other positions as they come about, I mean, if people are interested in volunteering for the town, I think on the website, it lists current vacancies for positions, you know, volunteer, you know, the committee positions. So if anybody's interested in various committees, either go to that particular meeting, talk to that particular chair, if there's a vacancy, apply for it, because, you know, we want to see all the... any vacancies filled. That's humble opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate and welcome Jake.
Thank you.
To the Board of Selectmen. I want to thank the residents of the town for coming out on that rainy Saturday, taking time out of their busy day and coming out and exercising their right to vote. I want to recognize all of the candidates, the poll workers, the DPW, the building individuals that kept the things up and running, the police that were there, especially the volunteers that stood out in the rain and held a sign for a candidate and got themselves a little wet, but made it through. But it was a... it was a great day for the town, and I just want to thank everybody involved in that. Thank you.
On a similar note, I'd also like to thank everyone that was involved and all the volunteers, all my supporters. You know, it's kind of a bit hard running for the first time as a bit of an outsider, so I was very excited when I won, but I couldn't have done it without everyone's help this time, but especially my wife and three daughters, who are rock stars during this, who maybe it wasn't their favorite thing, but they stood out there in the rain and everything else, and I'm looking forward to the next three years.
Well, they splashed around.
Yeah, I know, they're jumping in puddles, but anyway, that's all.
Trust me, you'll pay for those.
Oh, go ahead. No. I was just... I was going to say something in the same vein, just to, you know, congratulate Kevin and Jake, and also thank Steve Hunt for running. You know, we had a lot of new names in... for the school committee for select boards, so it's nice to see other people, you know, getting out there, and, you know, hopefully that trend continues where we'll start to get more volunteers to step up and, you know, run for committees and appointments and whatever. So... But it was a... it was a great race all around for all the boards, and, you know, I hope we can, you know, kind of... I don't know what we can do as residents, as a board or anything, to get more people out to vote, but I think if anything, this election has shown that every vote counts. You know, we had a very close election, as you all know, so, you know, I just wish we could get more people to vote in all the elections. I mean, I don't even think our, you know, presidential election was hit through the roof, but, you know, it's just important, especially, you know, in the town elections. But again, congrats to Kevin for reelection and Jacob, welcome. And ironic that you have three girls, and Greg had three girls.
I know.
Just a few years older, though.
Yeah, yeah, different... Yeah, different, yeah, but... but anyway.
Real quick, Mr. Chair. Again, I congratulated both Kevin and Jake in private over there and just sent them emails, but again, I think it's correct in that congratulations to both of you coming on to the Board and staying on the Board, and everybody involved in the process. I think it was a, you know, unfortunately, I agree with Lil, it's a slow turnout, and let's see what we can do to make it a more healthier turnout for the town, you know? Would we have like 10% or something like that?
I think it was seven.
Seven point three.
Eight.
Eight, yes, than 10.
That was eight.
And then, and you find out that, you know, that you can't get much closer than the election results, so everybody get out there and vote, so. And I would be remiss if we didn't mention Corporal Edwardson's funeral.
Oh, yeah.
That took place on Saturday as well. It was a...
It's beautiful.
A great tribute to a gentleman who sacrificed for our freedoms, and we want to continue to remember him and all of the veterans that serve for our country, but it was just a moving event on Saturday.
Very moving. It was... watching people standing there, it was amazing how quiet people were, and it was just one of the most moving I've seen in quite a long time. Also want to congratulate Kevin and Jake. There's nothing harder than putting your name out there and saying, "Hey, I can do the job. Vote for me." And I commend anybody who runs, and I congratulate anybody who runs. With that, Mr. West?
No, I just wanted to say, to give a lot of kudos to our town clerk, Beth Lawrence, and her staff for running what seems to be a pretty smooth election, despite moving around some precincts and having the senior center for the first time. Things went off pretty much without a hitch, and she and her staff, and you already mentioned the poll workers, all the people who volunteer their time, really did a great job, so I wanted to give them kudos, because I think that was a very well-run election. It doesn't always happen.
No. Always a good job.
Any other announcements? New business?
Mr. Chair, in reference to the MBTA, as was mentioned, and we got Jake being a new member, what I would propose is that we have an executive session at the special town... before the special town meeting, we have Town Council there with us, let Jake know, get Jake up to speed to what's going on, and let him know and ask Town Council direct, what can we release to the public? We're trying to keep all of our options open. I want to, you know, make sure that our five... five of us should know exactly what's going on, and I believe the Town Council's going to be there, so we should hear it from the horse's mouth. So I'd like to request a special town... special selectmen meeting, executive session, 8:00, 8:15, whatever, so that we can meet just prior to town meeting, go over our options. Maybe we have an option or two that we haven't discussed. So that's my recommendation.
I'm going to ask for discussion on this.
I would.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with that in bringing Jake up to speed, but I personally feel, and I'll only speak for myself, that after our last executive session, I think I felt like we hashed out our, you know, kind of roadmap to that, and I personally don't want to come up with some other, you know, options or something at the last minute before town meeting. That kind of scares me a little bit, because I just feel like we don't... that's not enough time before 9:00, you know, in an hour's time to say... I'm all for just doing an up-to-speed thing, get Jake up to speed. He can ask, you know, Mark or whomever the questions, but I think it has to be kind of like a redo of our last executive session to get somebody... get Jake up to Board, and if maybe if we have any questions or just to make sure we're ready to go for town meeting, but I don't think it's a time to start working other angles when we're going to be presenting and voting. Just my two cents on it.
I think the best way to handle this would be for Jake to set up some time with the town manager, and they can go over everything. It's going to be a real long day that day. Everyone knows what our town meetings are like, and I think it would serve the purpose for having him go over with the town manager, the MBTA, and if there are questions that are left unanswered, contact can be made with our legal counsel right then and there, and they can move right that along. That's right.
I agree.
I would strongly recommend.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, I just want to get up to speed and be able to ask questions and happy to meet with Mr. Slagel directly.
I just think you'll get better intel talking to Eric and, you know, Mark, whomever, directly than having us there.
Yeah, I'm more than willing to do that, and I think that makes sense for lots of reasons, not just for MBTA, just to have a meeting to go over.
Again, I'll ask one last time. I just... it sounds like it's a four-to-one here, and that's okay, but, you know, I just think that, you know, we should all be hearing from Town Council. Again, Mr... you know, our town manager's been great. He's been giving us all sorts of information, but it's always good to have the Town Council sitting there and asking Town Council exactly what's going on, specifically, what can we release at town meeting that may or may not influence whether this thing... how it gets voted? So again, I'm just throwing that out there.
Just one comment. I think we did, and correctly or wrong, but in our last executive session, we had discussed that, and we had said if certain questions come up, we were going to defer them to Mark. To legal.
And we had Town Council there.
We had Town Council at that meeting.
Town Council was not at our meeting.
Oh, no, that was the meeting before.
At the one before.
At the one before. I personally feel very comfortable...
In the exemptions, we...
Yeah.
Town Council was there to discuss that issue with us.
And then the last one. I personally feel very comfortable going into town meeting with the prep we've had in executive session, you know? But again, that's just... my suggestion would be, as Ms. DePalma said, in regards to Jake, and I also think if anybody has any concerns or worries, perhaps they work with Mr. Slagel, you know, through you with Town Council. I personally don't feel like I need to have that conversation or throw that around, and again, that's just my feeling. I don't think it's necessary. I feel pretty comfortable with what I can say publicly, and if I have that, you know, doubt, I will refer to Mark Rich, but that's my opinion on it.
Any comments, Mr. West? It sounds like it's a four-to-one, so we'll leave it at that.
Well, with all due respect, it's not a vote of four-to-one. It's the discretion of the chairman, whether he's setting up the agenda. So if he wants to set up an executive session, he has that, you know...
No, but it just seems like...
...authority to do that.
In agreement with that, so.
Just letting you know, it's not a vote of four-to-one.
Yeah. Just throwing it out there as a suggestion that...
Absolutely.
We could all, you know, we could all hear from... direct from Town Council, but...
Chairman DePalma, I was wondering if I could ask a question, please?
We've already done everything else.
It's actually not a public comment.
We're into appointment...
Yes, sir.
Important dates, sir.
Just a question.
Yeah, so important dates, April 28th through 29th, you have curbside collection of leaves and grass. April 30th, there's brush drop-off on Old Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. May 2nd, we have the Special Olympics Unified Games, Wilmington High School, starting at 10:00 a.m. May 3rd, we have brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, May 3rd, annual town meeting at the high school auditorium at 9:00 a.m., and special time meeting at the high school auditorium at 9:00 a.m. May 7th, there's brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. May 9th is the Good Guy Award Dinner. You can get your tickets from Bev. May 10th, brush drop-off at Old Main Street from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and May 12th through 16th, curbside collection of leaves and grass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slagel. Now we're on to salute service, and tonight, we're going to honor Robert Gothier, United States Air Force, served from December of 1967 until August of 1970. He's... His awards include National Defense Service Medal, Small Arms Expert Mockmanship Medal, and the Air Force Good Conduct Medal. Robert and his wife, Donna, have lived in Wilmington since 1970 and raised their family here. Robert is extremely generous in quite... in a quiet way, and we would like to thank him for what he does for Wilmington.
Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Good night.